Building and grounds committee meeting to order, Madam Secretary, if you read the roll, please.
Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Welper.
Here. Most approved, agenda is proposed.
I will second that motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, we have an agenda, Mr. Welper, if you'd like to take that.
I sure will. We have one request today by Tim Moore to purchase city-owned property with a development agreement located at 1330 Scott Avenue for $28,000.
Okay, I will second that motion, do we have questions, comments, discussions?
I don't unless Mr. Moore wants to say anything.
How much does it ask of questions, I've kind of got a call someone to do.
Yeah, I read through, it looks like you're going to be busy.
Yeah, very busy.
Yeah, well, good luck with this project.
Thank you.
I guess there's nobody really here from the public, I was going to say there were multiple bids and this is far and away the best bid and
Yeah.
Good for you, so, anybody got anything else? Okay, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, you are moving along.
Motion for adjournment.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, that's right. Okay, I'm going to call the boards and commission committee meeting to order, Kelly if you would please do the roll call.
It's over.
It's over. Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Tom, if you would do a motion.
I make a motion to approval of the agenda as proposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, we have an agenda. Tom, if you would please take one A through F.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to receive file, Mayor Hart's recommendations of filing appointments. Marcia Buckin for boards and commission planning and zoning, expiration date of 4/10/2020, and this is a new appointment. Jason Burbrekin, boards and commissions, community development, expiration date 3/1/2020, and this is a reappointment. Jamie Castle, board commission, planning and zoning, planning, programming and zoning, expiration date of 4/10/2020, it's a new appointment. Christina Wood, boards commission, cultural and arts commission, expiration date 3/1/2020, and it's a reappointment. Lisa Riley, boards commission, human rights, expiration 4/10/2020, and that's a new appointment. Teresa Culpepper, boards and commissions, and human rights, expiration date 4/10/2020, and it's a new appointment.
I will second that, is there any discussion on the motions?
I had one question, Mr. Chairman, and that was on Jamie Castle, and it's been confirmed you don't have to be a resident of the City of Waterloo to be on planning and zoning, and she does work as the information stated at an architecture firm, so she's involved in Waterloo in a lot of ways.
So what I heard you say is, is this not a requirement to be a-
It's not a requirement to be a resident, she does live in Cedar Falls, and that was my question.
Okay.
And that's been answered.
Clarifying, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I know I'm not on there, but I didn't know that it had been clarified, I mean, how that been clarified.
I talked to Noel, and Noel clarified, I don't know if you want Noel to speak to it, but-
Because I just talked to the city attorney, that's why I was late, and he definitely gave a different opinion.
Oh.
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, and actually I'll have Eric Schrader address you on this a little bit, Eric did some research on Friday with, I believe he tried to contact Mr. Chris Wendlin and with Mr. Dave Zellifer, Eric?
Eric Schrader, city planner, yeah, I did attempt to contact both Mr. Zellifer and Mr. Wendlin, I did hear back from Mr. Wendlin. The provision in the code says that the members of the planning and zoning commission will be appointed from the city at large, so the question is, from the city at large, does that require a residency requirement or not? Mr. Wendlin's legal opinion is that it is not a residency requirement, it is not written as clear as it could be, but he indicated that in his legal opinion, to be from the city at large requires that you have some sort of relation to the city of Waterloo, but that does not necessarily mean a residency relation. He feels that a work relation, i.e. if you work in the city of Waterloo, that can qualify under that term, and he feels that that opinion, that legal opinion, is backed up by the fact that there are other boards and commissions that do specify, they'll specifically state that you have to live within the city of Waterloo, or there's some that specifically state that you can live anywhere in Black Hawk County. So he feels that since the others were more specific, the ones that are more general of from the city at large, in his opinion, did not form a residency requirement. And I think that is backed up by past practice, you know, past precedent where we've interpreted as live or work within the city of Waterloo.
Thank you for that, Mr.-
And just to add real quickly to that, specifically Mrs. Castle is an architect as well, so in terms of knowing, you know, obviously if you watch the planning and zoning commission agendas, it's dealing with a lot of development, land use requests and movements, and we think, you know, her expertise as an architect would be helpful in that regards.
Okay, I have one question, Mr. Morrissey, you said that you had just talked with the city attorney downstairs, and
Yeah.
He had a different opinion, is that what I heard you say, or?
Well, his opinion was along the lines of what Eric Schrader had just stated as far as what the definition of city at large was rather nebulous.
Okay, so-
And, you know, hearing it from Eric and having talked to Chris Wendlin, it-
Shouldn't be-
It's still sort of nebulous, and I think it-
Might be by design that way.
The language could definitely be cleared up, and it sounds like Kelly and Mr. Zellifer are going to undertake that.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Clerk.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
So, having heard that, and are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I move for adjournment.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we are in the adjournment. Let's call our human resources committee to order, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Motion through the agenda is proposed.
Second. Motion a second on the agenda, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes, and we just have one request today, if somebody would take that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from leisure services director Paul Hudding for authorization to begin the civil service process for the position of park maintenance two crew leader and to make an appointment from the civil service list.
Second. Motion, a second on the request, is there any questions or discussion on this item? Paul is here to answer them, if you-
Mr. Chairman, Paul, can we share this position with any other department, like Public Works, or Streets, Sewer, or anything like that?
Paul Hudding, leisure services director, this is a full-time position that would be occupied, as park maintenance two crew leader, this person would be on a large levee mower, mowing our certified levee system for probably nine months out of the year, the rest of the time would also be then busy with, we've got snow removal duties, trail sweeping duties, so it's fully a full-time job. Now, we always share, you know, when it comes to emergency time or something like that, if we were having a flood, we're going back and forth with other department heads as needed, but on a regular basis, it's a full-time job.
What's your hourly rate?
It is on your sheet, we did reduce it, and I'll look up those numbers in a moment, it's 2513, we are reducing this position from a, the earlier title was turf crew leader, that was paid a little bit more because that individual was overseeing the other park maintenance twos, we're making this on a lateral with those other two positions that we have, so we're saving about $31, $3200 by making that change.
Do you want to talk about the level of expertise, or knowledge, or training, or anything like that for this position?
Well, this is someone who will have to be able to operate a large mower, a large tractor with an 18-foot cut unit that would operate on all of our levees, which is kind of a critical job, a little bit dangerous, requires some training. We also then have, this person would have to meet all the other requirements of the job description, including pesticide applicator's license, a Class A CDL, we'll be looking for someone who has experience in turf maintenance, diagnosing diseases and insects, weed problems, things like that, so basically a turf, someone that's well-rounded in the turf maintenance business.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Paul, I want to thank you for filling out the benefits amount with a dollar amount, rather than putting yes in there, thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Mr. Hudding, didn't we contract out some of the levy mowing recently, though?
We've contracted a large portion of our right-of-way mowing, and you guys just opened bids on that real recently, so that's the area along the highways, we haven't contracted the levy mowing, it's really pretty critical, we work closely with Jamie in engineering, we want to make sure that those are done to some exacting specs because of the certification process and so forth, so to say we absolutely couldn't contract, that probably wouldn't be true, but we're more comfortable having that in-house.
Have you ever looked into it, what the cost comparison would be between contracting out and having city staff do it?
We've done that as a comparison with our right-of-way mowing, because we do some right-of-way mowing in-house, we do some on a contracted basis, it's really pretty close cost-wise, the level of uncertainty is a little higher with the contracted, because depending on how many bidders we have, we've seen it creep up and back down over the years, we've seen a couple of pretty big jumps, competition came back in and then it came back down again, so it's a little less certain, but it's not a huge windfall of savings, it does, in the case that you don't have, when we started, it was when we were expanding greatly in our right-of-way with the 218 corridor going through and a number of other roadway projects, it saved us having to purchase a whole bunch of equipment, and it was a way to expand our operations without hiring lots of new people, so, you know, we've continued to do that. So we do have some comparisons there, we feel this one's a key position that we need to keep in-house.
I believe that it takes him one month to do a complete round, from when he starts mowing and gets back to where he started, it's a whole month.
And that's with an 18-foot wide mower?
Yeah, he's done this for 36 years, so we're, some knowledge is walking out the door on this one. Any other questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes. That motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you. Let's call our finance committee to order, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, okay, I'll move the approval of the agenda in the minutes of April 3rd, 2017, as proposed.
Second. You have a motion, a second on the agenda, the minutes, any questions or discussion on either one of those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Travel requests, we have five items, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, investigator Frye, and police officer Roberts to attend a class Midwest Gang Investigation Association 2017 conference, destination Wisconsin Dills, Wisconsin, the dates are May 21st through the 24th, amount not to exceed $464. Lieutenant Fangman of the police department, meeting of rights of police officers seminar, destination is Las Vegas, Nevada, dates June 6th through the 12th of 2017, amount not to exceed $1,563. Brian Baker, chief HVAC inspector, class meeting, 2017 Iowa ACE, which is the Iowa Association of Code Enforcement, spring conference, destination Altoona, Iowa, dates are May 11th through the 12th, 2017, amount not to exceed $285. Barry Stratton, property safety inspector, it's a class 2017 Iowa ACE, it's the Iowa Association of Code Enforcement, spring conference, destination Altoona, May 11th through the 12th, $250. Keith Caspary, director of aviation, it's Cedar Valley Coalition meeting in Washington, DC, June 12th through the 14th, 2017, amount not to exceed $1,300.
Second.
Motion a second on the five travel requests, any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those motions pass. Pre-oths.
Pre-othsations to expend over $1,000. Central garage, amount estimated with shipping and handling of $15,450 plus $100 shipping handling, placement forklift for garage operations. Finance $10,000 for consulting services. Leisure services, not to exceed $10,000 for improvements to log disposal site east end of Falls Avenue. MIS, not to exceed $6,000, annual renewal of McPhee antivirus. Police department, $1,500, train seminar for the canines and handlers of the Waterloo Police Department. Police Department, $2,934, vinyl graphics for six 2017 Waterloo police cars. Planning, $2,560. Asbestos survey services for 1100 Grant Avenue and 919 to 925 Commercial Street. Planning $23,385 for a Phase One environmental assessment for 120 Center Street. Planning $24,000 workforce housing tax credits for 140 and 150 Rapid Square rental units, Prairie Rapids. Suit apartment, $7,260 plus $300 shipping and handling. Electrical VFD, which is variable frequency drive for number two affluent lift station pump, suit apartment, $53,378.75. Digestor cleaning and land application of bio solids for one digester, 70-foot in diameter, number six digester. Traffic operations, $5,185.42 for two 40-foot black galvanized street light poles. Traffic operations, $2,657.85 plus $400 shipping handling, one decorative walkway light pole and two hollow fame fixtures. Lastly, traffic operations, $1,671.11 for one traffic signal pole and T base.
Second. Second. Can we have a motion, a second on all the pre-oths, any questions on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman, if we could have an explanation for finance, $10,000 for consulting services, please.
Michelle Weedner, chief financial officer, that's to consider the arrange, or to continue the arrangement that we've had with Jim's life and tandem graphics through the budget. This would take it through June 30th of 2017.
Any other questions? Noel?
Mr. Chairman, if we could have explanation, what are we doing with the log disposal site?
Which one was that?
It's for $10,000 leisure services.
Paul.
Paul Hudding, leisure services director, that's to purchase gravel for that site, it's a muddy mess, and we're doing some grading in there, but we also need some rock so that the general public can access it, and so our crews can access it to dump the, or to unload the logs there, it's a firewood site.
All right, but had we recently purchased gravel, Paul?
Have we recently purchased?
Wasn't a while back that we did that?
Um, we, there was a grading item that looked very similar to this. You authorized us to hire a company to grade it, and then they need the supplies to do that, so basically this is supplies.
And if Noel could tell us about 120 Center Street and the Phase One environmental-
Noel Anderson, community planning and development director, 120 Center Street, it's an older building, we went through the 678 process to acquire, we've been working with the DNR with some grant funds to basically clean that site up, there was some environmental hazards out there that we are cleaning up through this Phase One work, and there'll be some more steps going through, but the DNR, we received some DNR grants to help us with this.
The reason why it's seems so high, what are we doing? Do you get any more on that?
Um, there was a lot of barrels out there and some unknown conditions, I was trying to see if Chris was here to go in through a better explanation, but we can definitely let you see the Phase One reports, but there was a lot of barrels out there that they had to do testing on, there were some unknown substances that they had to identify that were later found out to be associated with the welding activity residue, but they had to do a lot of work out there.
So that wasn't former Cleveland welding supply?
That is correct.
Yep.
Lot of hazards. That 1100 grant, is that a ninth and, ninth and grant?
Ninth and grant, yes it is, that's the building with the
It's fallen down.
Street departments put some barriers around it because they were nervous about pieces falling off of it, so we're trying to get that down pretty quickly.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We have two budget line item amendments which are filed at the city clerk's office, and the bill's payment this week, $1,040,279.61, that's 1,040,279.61. Second. Motion a second on the bill's payment, questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, bills are paid.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Evening, everyone. It is time for our council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Wupper?
Here.
All right, we have a full council. Now it's time for our moment of silence. You can either stand or sit. Did attend another funeral today. Former Mayor John Cruz in Cedar Falls had their funeral this afternoon, so if you would keep them in your thoughts, that'd be great. This evening's pledge will be led by myself, so please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. You may be seated if you are not already.
Mr. Mayor?
Welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of April 3rd, 2017, regular session as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? We have an agenda and minutes. First portion of this meeting, I'd like to invite Brandon Hodgson up. Where you at, Brandon? Come on up here. We, you're in the audience, so we're gonna bring you forward. He's bold enough to be here. How you doing, Brandon? Good, good. Brandon is a city employee in our Public Works Department, but even more importantly, Brandon was named our Team Member of the Month for April, well, yeah, for April, yeah. And it's a program that we have to recognize exemplary efforts of our city staff. So often, we get a lot of questions, we, we, we sometimes forget how valuable people like Brandon are to the city of Waterloo. They're selfless, they do a wonderful job, and it's our opportunity to shed just a little bit of light on the efforts that they have made within the city and their dedication. And it reads, Team Member of the Month. This certificate is awarded to Brandon Hodgson in recognition of demonstrating performance and effort which exemplifies a standard of excellence and dedication within the city workforce in delivery of service to our customers, the citizens, and fellow team members. So, we absolutely want to recognize and for his efforts and since he was bold enough to show up here, Brandon, you want to say a couple words about your work here?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the recognition. It's nice to be recognized for the work that we do. Thoroughly enjoy working for the city. It's a great place to work. We've got a fantastic team, so it kind of makes things for me that much easier.
All right, all right. Thank you so much, Brandon. And we are glad that you are staying for the rest of the council meeting, too. You could've made your way out, you know, but you gotta sit now. See you later, thank you. Thank you. All right, now it is time for oral presentations. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on items of the heart or the mind, but let us know what you're thinking?
Evening, Mayor, Council, Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I think it was about a year ago, I think we hired a consultant firm to either bring jobs into the city or tell us what our city, what jobs or businesses were compatible with our city. And I believe we hired another person in planning and zoning. Have we, has this really paid off for us? Have we, have they brought any businesses into the city or, what, I guess, are we getting bang for our buck or?
Yes.
What, we are? Like, what businesses have they brought in? I know they brought in...
There's one on the agenda tonight where we had a little challenge in the Quick Star biofueling site. That work was done through calls, through opportunities, through our specialists working with Noel to find adequate site and space, although that was voted down by a couple council members, so that is one example.
Okay, and Harold's chicken, the chicken is good, but don't go on opening day again, so, thank you.
Forest Delvee, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to speak just briefly about galactic drive. During the budget sessions, it was talked about concrete streets versus asphalt streets, and the engineer told us that we did galactic drive in concrete. So I went out to look at galactic drives since not only is it concrete, but it has some encroachments on it. So I went out and drove down there and the first thing I saw was parking entrance only for VGM. Now, this is a public street, I'm quite sure, because it has the proper colored sign for a city street. And at the end of this galactic drive, there's a roundabout. So we spent taxpayer dollars for a nice concrete street, a roundabout for a parking lot entrance, according to the sign. I think we, concrete is right, but we should do it on city streets rather than a private drive for a private business, or a private business owner. Thank you.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I have three items, Mr. Mayor. Have we yet figured out what we contracted a job for and what the actual cost with the change orders? I see on the agenda tonight, there's a change order for painting the pool and...
You can't speak to non-agenda related items during oral presentations. I mean, you can't speak to agenda related items, you have to wait to that item.
Okay, I will, thank you. But my question is, have we ever, and I know this item was brought up some time ago, that have we ever done a cost plus to figure out whether we have, well, we maybe should've taken bid number two? And I know this was talked about also by the council as to whether we could select locally owned contractors. Number two is, are we looking into the setting up of the city board, citizen board, to look into saving money for the city, AKA an efficiency task force? And how many vehicles have we purchased in the last 12 months? That's on Consent A3.
To number one, really during oral presentations, you only get to ask one question. So I just wanted noted that for about the last year and a half, those that have come up have been able to ask multiple questions, so, just so you know that when we talk about transparency and communication. But number one, we had, we had an entire work session with regards to change orders, and we talked about that already. Every change order that comes up, now city staff explains what that change order and why we have that, so that's the best I can do on that one. Number two, you read the newspaper already about the direction that I believe that we need to take, so that's been answered. Number three, what is it, consent for what? For, I don't know how many vehicles we bought, I can't get you that information right now, I don't know that offhand. Anyone else like to address the council? Going a second time?
Motion received and filed for oral comments?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor? Oppose? Comments received.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's items one through five.
Please close the window so we can hear somebody.
And within that are the bill's payment, and the bill's payment this week is $1,040,279.61. That's 1,040,279.61. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
I have a couple questions on the consent agenda. One's a comment on 1B1E, and I'm not picking on the Director of Aviation, but I've noticed on this Cedar Valley Coalition trip, the lodging charges are approaching $400 a night, and I would just make the suggestion that we work hard to kind of tone that down a little bit, because you can get cheaper rooms. And the second is the appointments, 1B3C, can we consider that separately? Only because I know she's highly qualified, I just want to make sure the public understands what we're doing with the residency requirement.
So, Mr. Lynn, would you like to make the motion on the consent agenda to vote for 1, was it 1B3C separately, or would you like some explanation on that right now?
Which would you prefer? Would it be just as easy to do it now?
Yeah. Should we just have some...
Okay, then, then here's my question. The ordinance 211, they talk about the remaining six members will be selected from the city at large. That's the, that's what the ordinance says. I'm standing right in front of it. 211, the remaining six members will be selected from the city at large, and I've heard that discussion during the committee meeting, and it's my understanding that the attorneys have concurred that that doesn't mean Waterloo, it means, I don't know what it means. Can we get an explanation of that, or an opinion, a legal opinion?
I think...
So the public understands that we're not violating our own ordinance?
Same question I had. Either Eric or Noel, you talked to Lindland, so if you want to get up and talk about it.
Eric Schrader, City Planner. As Mr. Lynn noted, the section in the code of ordinances provides for six of the nine members to come from the city at large, so the question was raised as to whether or not that provides for a residency requirement, that they have to live within the city limits. Our office did review with Chris Wendlin from the City Attorney's Office, who made the legal opinion that that does not provide a residency requirement. It is a little unclear, but it was his opinion that it requires that there be a relation with the city, which can include a work relation if you work within the city of Waterloo. And he also looked at other boards and commissions that specifically identify either you do have to live within the city of Waterloo, or you don't have to live within the city of Waterloo, as further reasoning of why, you know, with that particular one, it would not be correct to interpret it as a residency requirement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we, could you get us the written legal opinion?
I can request one, I just, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Wendlin.
That would certainly satisfy everybody, I think.
And there definitely is concession that there's a little bit of non-clarity in that language, so it is certainly something we could look at.
I just want to make sure people don't say to us, "We're not following our own rules." And that would certainly clarify that.
Correct.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
All right, those items carry. Present, we have this evening Marcia Bujan, Jamie Castle, and Teresa Culpepper. Did Lisa Riley make it? With, with those that are just newly appointed, would you please stand up for us? All right, we want to thank you for your dedication and support to serving the city of Waterloo, and we look forward to your service, so, thank you. As part of this first meeting, you have to stay for the entire council meeting. No, you're welcome to take off, but it would be a good civics lesson. All right, so, number two. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication on notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2017 Street Reconstruction Program, contract number 921.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, instruct the City Clerk to read bids, and refer to City Engineer for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Our estimate for the total Division One base bid plus alternate A plus Division Two plus Division Three plus Division Four was $8,865,765.99. And then the total for Division One base bid plus alternate B plus Division Two plus Division Three plus Division Four is $8,870,832.30. Our first bid was Kroll Incorporated of New Hampton, Iowa. They provided 5% security. They provided no bid for the first group, and for the second group, their bid amount was $9,338,233.42. Our second bid came from Aspro Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their total bid for Division One and the alternates was $7,699,490.74, and they provided no bid on the second.
All right, thank you. Could someone take three, four, and five, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number three is the... Number three is a resolution approving lease agreement with Silver Eagle Harley-Davidson for two Harley-Davidson police motorcycles for a 12-month period at a cost of $135 per motorcycle per month, for a total amount of $3,240, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution four is a resolution awarding contract to Dix Petroleum of Tripoli, Iowa in the amount of $40,576.53 in conjunction with the replacement of fuel pump dispensers at the city fuel distribution site, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution number five is a resolution approving award of contract to Wilson Custom Tree of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of $86,714.25. Approving bond and certification of insurance in conjunction with the 2017 spring stump removal project, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions about these three items?
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. May I speak about 3 and 5?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm trying to remember, and I think last year we did a six-month lease on the motorcycles. So why are we doing a 12-month lease this year and paying for six months that they probably won't be used? And number five, how much has the ash borer problem cost us? And why is Cedar Falls leading the way to save them? We seem to know what it's costing us to take the trees down, and now we got another stump grinding, which I am assuming is to take those ash stumps out.
Could you talk about the Harleys?
Dan Trucco, Police Chief. The weather has been unseasonably warm. We're hoping for a repeat of that. We were limited in our availability to the motorcycles last year for only six months. The officers that ride them would like to extend it out further.
Mr. Hudding, can you talk about why they had a nice article in the newspaper? I guess ours wasn't reported that we were leading the way when we talked about the same things a couple of years ago.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Cedar Falls is considering allowing adjacent property owners to treat trees at their own expense. I think they're also considering treating some of their key trees in their parks, golf courses. We have been doing that. We've been allowing people, if they wanted to pay on their own, to treat the trees and save them in the parking area along the streets. And I think, I'll probably get the number wrong, our forester could tell us exactly, but we probably have three or four dozen trees that are being treated that way. We're also doing some in our parks, but a very limited number. The problem is, over the long haul, you're going to spend an annual amount or biannual amount of, somewhere in the area of a couple hundred bucks per tree, and then when you take that times the number of trees we have, it's just pretty much cost prohibitive. So, we feel, given what we feel is the fact, from entomologists that are well-known and should know what they're talking about, this thing is going to keep coming at us, so you would have to just continually treat. We think in the long run, the city's better off financially to cut our losses, cut our trees down, for the most part. Obviously, there are going to be some key trees in some key locations on a golf course or a memorial tree or something like that, that we'll have special consideration. We think this is the best thing financially for the city, and also environmentally. There's also another whole question about introducing the pesticide into the environment in mass quantities. Now, a tree here or there, not such a big deal, but if we're going to do thousands of trees, we have concerns about the environment as well. The stumps, to speak to that, that was anticipated cost, and we do have the bond money to pay for that.
And when we first started, from all the public meetings, we had council meetings about the ash borer. Taking a look at the treatment of it was one option that we looked at also.
Correct. And we actually bought the equipment and trained our staff to do that, and we can do that. We can treat trees, and we are treating some trees. There's a row of autumn purple ash in Burns Park that we've treated, and will continue to treat in the foreseeable future, because they're key trees and they're beautiful trees. But we just can't afford to do all of them.
Thank you. Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
This is directed at Director Hudding. If I remember correctly, those trees that we are taking down, are we not replacing some of those trees with younger trees?
Yes, we are. Couple weeks back, you'll recall, we sold some logs from some trees that were cut down at the Airborne Golf Course. Those logs were sold for, I think it was $7,700, and that money's being put directly back with approval of council into purchasing trees for that same area. We also have a number of grants through Mid-American Energy, Green Scene, and others that allow us to replace trees. Unfortunately, we're removing so many trees, it's going to take a few years to get them all replaced. But there are grants and other forms. And then, part of the money that you've designated for the ash borer replacement, removal and replacement program, I think is the title we have on the CIP, part of that is also for purchasing trees.
You should have kept the ones on number three. It's like gravity pulls my golf ball to that pond for some reason.
You've got to figure that out.
Yeah, I'm trying to hit over it. All right, any other questions about these three items?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I think Director Hudding has done a fantastic job with the tree program, and we're not behind a-ball on anything there. I think we've cooperated very well with our neighbors on that, and he's been very mindful of the cost and also saving a few trees where necessary. So I think he should be commended for a great job done.
He's going to thank his staff.
Thank you, but I have to thank Doug Deerfield, City Forester. He's been the leader on this. But thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving supplemental agreement number four with AECOM of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $115,000 for construction-related services for fiscal year 2017 4th Street Bridge Canopy Repairs, contract number 910, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions? Any one question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Somebody was going to get, for me, the preliminary engineering cost on that bridge. Was that able to be figured? Noel or Kelly? Did you? Does anybody know how much we spent so far to design, you know, prepare bids, all that stuff with AECOM? We not keep track of that?
Very close, seniors. That's the first I've heard the question is right now, Councilman Lynn. So I can't handle those numbers. I don't know if Doug's here, if he can remember or not. I can't right off the top of my head, but we can certainly get it.
Doug Shundo with AECOM. Mr. Lynn, I don't remember that number, but we can certainly get it for you. And this was supplemental number four. I know maybe that created some questions, because we also had the 4th Street Bridge repairs. If you remember, on the south side of that bridge, we had the river wall and slow protection repairs. So that was kind of the initial agreement. And then we did a conceptual report on the 4th Street Canopy Bridge, then we did the construction-related services on the 4th Street Slow Protection and River Wall. And then now, this is the fourth one, because we're doing the construction-related services for the canopy bridge repairs. But I can get that for you, I just don't remember off the top of my head what the design agreement was for, for that specific design.
It wouldn't be this high, would it? It wouldn't be $100,000?
No, I don't believe it was.
Okay. Well, I guess my only, can you get that for me?
Sure.
My point is, we did a letting for this bridge, costs us a lot of money, but there's still a lot of other costs we have to incur fixing the canopy. And I just wanted to make sure we be understood that there's, here's another $115, and we probably spent $25 to $50 before. So, that's my only point.
Can you get that to him within 24?
At your leisure.
Yeah, I can get it. I can email the council tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. This $115 million, is that on top of the $1.4 million?
$115,000.
Or $115,000, I'm sorry. Is this on top of the $1.4 million that we already voted on? And don't we have an engineer that can oversee this project, Mayor?
Eric. And then about the engineering portion, too?
Eric Thorsten, yes, this is on top of the construction cost, and we do not have the available staff to follow this this year. We've committed to other projects, and we only have a limited amount of staff. So, we also don't have quite as much expertise in steel and painting repair as a consultant does. So, we just don't have the personnel available this year to do it because of other commitments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, Eric, this is on top of the $1.4 or $1.5?
Eric Thorsten, yes.
Which was already raised, excuse me, which was already raised $93,000 by adding additional?
This, the $93,000 was included in what was approved last week.
For adding the bridge. I thought that 93 was an additional item last week.
That was included last week to replace the windows. That was one of the alternates.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
All right, someone take number seven, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion received and filed, consider and passed for the second time, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079, as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending section 10-3-1, definition billboard and fence residential, section 10-8-1, parentheses A, parentheses 4, and parentheses 10. R1, district principal permitted uses, section 10-14-1, parentheses 8, parentheses 3. C1, district principal permitted uses, section 10-15-1, parentheses A. C2, district principal permitted uses, section 10-22-2, parentheses A. Floodway overlay district principal permitted uses, section 10-22-2, parentheses B. Floodway overlay district conditional uses, section 10-26-1, parentheses B. Definitions, section 10-26-1, parentheses C. Regulation of all signs, section 10-27-1, parentheses H, parentheses 6, and parentheses 7. Special permit required, section 10-27-1, parentheses O. Towers and wireless communication facilities.
Second.
Wait, can you do that again?
Yes. Motion to-
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance number 5079 by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property located east of 3308 Bayberry Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.